Good morning, everybody. It's eight thirty. It's time to call the meeting of Tuesday, March twenty fifth. To order, our first item is to approve the agenda, and I would like to make note that we do have one agenda addition, which is a brief discussion on the jail partnership discussion we had with Becker County. And then we also are going to postpone item number five for today that's on the agenda. And so what I'll do at this point is I'll put that jail discussion down to, in that time slot.
Move to approve with changes?
Second.
In the second, any further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same. Motion carried. Uh, moving on to citizens to be heard. Do we have any citizens to be heard this morning? Any citizens to be heard? Seeing none, we'll move on to the payment of the bills and taxes.
Shall move?
Second.
Motion is second to pay the bills. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same. Motion carried. Our eight thirty-five item is the addition of musk thistle to Clay County noxious weed control list. And Kevin is here, Kassenberg from Clay County Soil, Water and Soil Conservation. Welcome, Kevin.
Oh, nice. I, uh, did you all get a copy of this memo? I think I put it together about as, exactly what I want to say. Actually, Vicky put it together for me the way she wanted to have it. Exactly how I wanted to say it, so I appreciate that, Vicky.
Some things-
Yes, she does a good job. Thank you.
Some things never change.
Sometimes that's good. Anyway, it's exactly what it says there. The, uh, our town board meetings were held last Monday, and part of the job of the ag inspector for the county is to hold a workshop for the township officials once a year to basically fill them in on what the new noxious weed program for the state of Minnesota is. Um, I think I had forwarded Vicky a copy of the, the two thousand fourteen noxious weed list as far as the state has it. In the past, you guys had approved in two thousand eleven the addition of kosher and bull thistle, because those have been delisted by the state. The township officials felt that those were two that they wanted to add back on the list, so in two thousand eleven that was something that was brought to you by Kent Severson at the time. You guys had approved it. So the addition, um, of bull thistle and kosher remain on Clay County's list. And this year, the Minnesota Department of Agriculture decided to de-list musk thistle. And for whatever reason, they feel it's more of a regional problem than statewide. So after talking to our board or the township officials, their board meeting last Monday, um, the bull thistle, Canada thistle, plumeless thistle, and now musk thistle, they all look so much alike. And I did make a little copy for you guys just to see the variations are, you know, all driving around, they look so much alike. Flowers are very similar in color. The spiny leaves are all fairly prickly. Um, to make things easy, we just felt, and the town board officials have felt also, if we could just add that one on there. The feeling, I think, was a dead thistle is a good thistle. So if we can get rid of those, um, it makes things a little easier. So they were, they were in agreement to bring it forward to the county board, basically requesting your blessing to take it up to the Minnesota Department of Ag Commissioner, Dave Frederickson. And it's, uh, basically a letter stating that you would want to add that to the county's list is what I am after, I guess. So basically, that's about it.
Kevin, can you explain what it means to be on the noxious list?
Um, it's basically those that the state wants to control. There are other weeds on this list, the eradicate list. And like it says here, it must be eradicated by killing the above and below ground parts of the plant. Most of those aren't, we probably don't even have in, maybe not even in the state, definitely not in Clay County as of yet. The ones that are on the control list are ones that they see as being invasive and basically will overtake an area. I mean, they're pretty aggressive plants that they're trying to eliminate. And a lot of these things that we're seeing have got, uh, there's a substance in them. If animals should eat them, maybe can cause some, uh, you know, maybe even cause deaths, noxious, uh, to the livestock. Also, by touching a lot of these things, there are tendencies to get the juice or sap on your arms. Um, you can get blistering, that type of thing. So basically, the idea is to control the ones that are on the control list with in addition to the county list of the bull thistle and kosher are what we're after right now. Some of the restricted ones, basically, they can't be sold in the counties. A lot of these things were, have been sold as ornamentals. And we're seeing the landscape industry going back and revisiting some of the things that, the plants that they have sold over time as being ornamental landscape type plants, trying to get those off the, off the market. Trouble is, a lot of these things, you get like, uh, um, old things like, uh, what am I trying to think? Purple loose drive. It's got a pretty purple flower. Beautiful, beautiful plant. But it is so aggressive, it just overtakes, and it's really causing problems in our wetlands and lake countries. So a lot of these things, like I say, came into play because they were kind of an ornamental looking species, but, uh, we don't have any real, um, natural enemies against it on these. So they just seem like they're just so aggressive, they overtake things. So we were at a, our state conference last year was down in Red Wing, Minnesota, and this wild parsnip out there has just gone nuts down there. It's just all over. And I think, uh, the eradicating is impossible. I think maintaining is about the best they're going to be able to do. The year before, we were at the Inhibing, Minnesota, and this common tansy that's on the list is really, that's just wild out there. It's a pretty little yellow flower, kind of a button shaped flower. It's just going crazy out there. So I think, uh, one thing I see with the job is, is it's perpetual, because you're never going to eliminate these things. And a lot of times, you end up killing a weed. It leaves a dead, uh, a bear patch. I guess unless grass can come in and take over, it opens up, you know, a bear spot. Mother nature's way of healing herself is to come back in with a, probably a weed species that we see. I mean, thistles are really aggressive and have the tendency that, to, to make it in tough conditions. So, but like I said, they request to put, add musk thistle, and it's something the town board were in favor of adding on. And they have to control the stuff in their township. So it's another species that, uh, that they just have to keep an eye out for, so.
Can they control, Kevin, can they control most of those with the same type of product?
Yeah, and, uh, you know, last year, our, our board of supervisors at the Song Conservation District, we decided that we wanted to be a little more aggressive, so we went and bought a backpack sprayer. Um, the county paid half of that, and we paid the other half. And a chemical that we looked into, something called Perspective. And with the ones that we were targeting were this, this thistles, um, the tansy, the wild parsnip, spotted knappweed, some of the things that are kind of uncommon to myself, but are tough, and once they get, when they get a hole, they really, they want to just expand it and are very aggressive. Um, the chemical that, that we purchased are primarily focusing on, we'll take those, those specific, uh, those weeds. And like I said, we decided, rather than have our county sprayer that we, that we, um, basically are in the process right now of putting out bids to get a sprayer for the county for the upcoming year, we thought some of the small spots that we were out with our SWCD jobs were around the county so much that if we can maybe eliminate a spot by touching it, hitting it with a little spray ourselves, we're doing that. So hopefully, that's maybe, you know, slow, slow the process of some of these weeds spreading, I guess, in the county.
Okay, well, we've got a request to have this added in the latter sense of the Minnesota permit by culture.
Shall move.
Motion in a second. Any further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same. All right, you got it, Kevin?
Thanks, Jason. Thank you.
Mr. Chair of the May, when Kevin is here, yet, uh, last Tuesday night, and Commissioner Grossen showed a report on it, we were out at Holly for an airport meeting, and the township officer that was out there mentioned the weed control, and he just complimented the county on, on soil and water's handling of this weed. And they really appreciated the work that they were doing and said it was a good switch. And you know, at the time, if you remember right, we were taking on more of the food inspection, and we were looking for a home for this. So this is, that's only one feedback, but that's a real positive feedback on the fact that they're doing a good job for the county. We really appreciate that.
It's amazing what a five dollar bill will do.
That's right.
Well, I appreciate that. We, we hear the other way a lot of times, too, that, you know, we wish you'd be doing this, that, and the other things. So it's good to hear a, a compliment, so I appreciate it. Thank you.
Good work. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thanks, Kevin.
You're welcome.
A little bit early here. Let's, um, do committee reports here. Frank, do you have any reports to give this morning?
Uh, last Tuesday, FM Cog had an executive committee meeting, just working more with, still working on some personnel situation there. Uh, Tuesday night, Holly Airport, where Holly is looking at expanding their airport. It's going to involve quite a bit of stuff that they have to look into, because they're, once you start expanding the airport, then you're taking zone, a lot of zone things, um, zone A, zone B, zone C, you've got to keep land that you can develop or whatever, you know. So may even have to move some roads. So it's going to be a lot of stuff involved in that. And you've got a company working on that, working into, looking into how that's going to work out for them. So it's just an initial meeting there and, um-
Frank, how big are planes are they planning on, on creating the runway for? Is it, do you know how big they are?
Uh, I think it's a ten passenger jet that they're looking at. They're looking, I think the airport is now thirty-two hundred feet. And I think they want to go to four thousand, possibly.
Okay.
But, uh, uh, as was stated, that some of the new airplanes are getting better, that they can land at shorter fields and stuff like that, so. But I think they are looking at four thousand and looking at adding some hangars and stuff like that. Wednesday, um, started with Extension Committee, University of Minnesota Extension Committee. And then there, went on to, uh, I guess, John stayed for the whole thing. I had to leave to go to another, um, executive committee meeting. Just routine stuff, I guess. We talked about the four H precision and a couple of other things. Probably John's got more to report on that, too. Thursday, we had the regular meeting of the FM Cog. Uh, there we went through proposals. We're looking at the great separations in Moorhead, um, looking at the twenty, twenty, forty plan that they're looking at. Uh, they had some meetings around the area, and they're going to present that plan to us next month or two, something like that. Last night, I went to the, up at Fertile, the Agacy Recreation Trails. And that's getting to be pretty much involved where they're running into fund problems. They're trying to decide who owns the trail, and I think it's sort of coming out, we had a lawyer out there last night. And I think he was sort of saying that the counties own the trail, you know. So who's going to fund the, the constant maintenance of this where we're running into problems? So who's going to fund this trail? You know, if the county owns the trail, who will be doing the funding since there, there's no funds, there's not enough funds coming in to run the trail? You know, so who's going to fund this trail? I mean, and what happens if they run out of money? Who's the land go back to? Or, you know, how do you divide this land back up again when all three of us? I mean, even though we only have around five miles of it in Clay County, we own, uh, I think around sixty, what is it? I don't know, fifty miles of it, something like that. We own all of it, you know. We own one-third of all of it. You know, we don't just own the land in Clay County. Clay County owns the land in Polk County and in Norman County. So if something would happen that goes back to the county, who, how's that divided up? Or how are we going to, or is the county going to look at participating in funds? Are we going to start throwing some funds in there? We initially, I, I see, I think each county put in fifteen thousand dollars to start this thing out a few years back. Now, are we going to continue these funds? Like we, are we going to put them on our budget and every year give them so much in funds? You know, that's some decisions they're going to have to make on there to keep that thing going, because right now they're in trouble.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Chair.
I guess I don't understand how we could own, I can see that somehow we might by default own the five miles in Clay County, but I can't see how we can own the, the property in other counties unless we've ever acted to receive that. I mean, it wasn't ours initially. If it's, if it goes back because nobody else owns it, then it would be just our, our five miles.
Well, I think that's where we got to get some attorneys involved in this thing and see who owns this land. According, according to the attorney that was there last night, that the counties own this land, the art board does not own this land. The county's own the land. The art board is just the one that runs the thing.
Well, how is the land acquired?
Well, the railroad gave it to, gave it to the art board. And somehow, I think, it was purchased.
I think it'd be something to have Jenny look at for-
Well, I would think it would go back to when other, other railroads are abandoned, it goes back to the landowners, where it sits, you know.
Well, we're having a lot of problems with landowners, you know, on approachments and stuff like that. And they're saying, there's, there's a lawsuit going on right now as far as who owns the land, you know. It's the farmer who's next to it. Can, can he mow it and farm it up to the, right up to the, as far as he can go? But the art board is saying they own fifty feet on either side of it and don't, don't do any approachments. So we've got problems there already. So the art board or the counties, either one, I don't know. I guess that's what we've got to find out. Who owns this land? Well, if we own the land, are we going to maintain it? Is the county going to get involved in maintaining it?
I can't remember for sure if that, if that was one of the railroad land, if that was one of the issues when they basically gave up the railroad land. If that was one of the issues where, um, the local government entity had the first choice to determine if it was a public use or not? I don't know if that applied to that or not. And if not, then I thought it was supposed to go back to the abutting property owners. But I may be wrong, but that would be something that maybe we can have Jenny check into.
Well, like I say, I think that's something our county's going to have to get involved in, probably with the other counties. And probably get together with them. I don't know whether attorneys get together, whether commissioners get together, whatever, you know, or the county administrators get together. But we've got to find out who owns this land. And if we do own the land, are we going to get involved in putting it on the budget and maintaining this stuff? You know, uh, there was a one time, I don't know how many years back it was, that fifteen thousand dollar donation the county made to it. But it's going to be after, they need more funds.
How much is needed to finish the project?
Well, they're looking, well, I don't know, to finish the project, just to maintain the project.
Okay. It's, it's finished. I mean-
Yeah, it's finished. I mean, they've got the land, you know, but, I mean, you've got to groom this every year. There's insurance, there's ditch assessments, I mean, there's, there's just all kinds of different funds to run this thing. You know, and, uh, they were talking a little bit about possibly each county putting in ten thousand dollars yearly, you know, to keep it going and stuff like that. So, I mean, that's all discussion. I mean, it's not, there's nothing bold or anything like that that we have to do. But I think we have to do something. First of all, we've got to determine who owns it, and once we decide who owns it, then who's going to maintain it?
I think that's right. I think we need to know what our responsibilities and liabilities are with it, and then we can make decisions from there.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Commissioner Gross and I have been talking about this project for a few months now. And, you know, the uncertainty kind of goes back even further than just the land that the trail is on. Um, just historically, I don't think anybody is aware if there are, if there's a joint powers agreement, if there are bylaws that govern this entity. Uh, so we were kind of talking about that. And I believe the board's wishes were to look at signing a joint powers agreement and establishing bylaws and kind of starting in that, in that sense. Um, but it, you know, in some ways, it seems to me like that must have happened at some time.
I, I just, I, for the, I can't understand how, how different county boards would have jointly acquired land like that without something like that in place. It's just, it's just so common knowledge to do that, that it-
Right.
It's kind of odd that there wouldn't be some record of that from the past.
Right. And that's, you know, what we had kind of struggled with and thought, well, if we need to renew that or start again, we can do that. But that factors into this whole ownership question as well. If the, the trail board was granted that land by the railroad or however it was acquired, and there was no trail board, you know, there, it creates all kinds of troubles in, in the transferability of the land, so. But I certainly would be happy to look into it, um, either speak with that attorney that was at the meeting, or I think it would be wise to get the counties together and see if anybody has any more historical perspective on it, because that's, there seems to be a big chunk of information that's missing.
Well, I think we need to get together.
Yeah.
It's, it's not a matter of whether we think it's a good idea or not. I think we need to do it. Something's got to be done. Who owns, who owns this land? And who's going to maintain it? I mean, the art board runs it, but who owns it?
Well, I think maybe through your committee of members, you can establish some, a time to get them all together. And if you're hearing Jenny say she'd be glad to help, so. And Brad?
Mr. Chair, there's a couple other issues on that, too, and, and just a practical one that we dealt with a couple of years ago that I know I fielded several calls on, and that was a fire call. And we did end up paying the township like four hundred dollars for that fire call. And, uh, I know Commissioner Waller at the time just really wanted to resist paying that fire bill, and then he consented to finally at the end. So, but the liability would be a bigger concern for us as a county than, than probably anything else. If there was something that was left, rocks on it, a snowmobile or ATV trail runs over, so. I would choose, Mr. Chair, volunteer to work with Jenny and Commissioner Gross, and we'll, we'll get some, we'll determine something on that.
Okay, just one more brilliant mind into this mix.
No.
Volunteer.
Put the general sense of humor this Friday.
That's it for my meeting.
Thank you, Frank. Okay, we'll come back to committee reports later. Let's go back to our agenda, and we'll call up our engineer, Dave Overbow. Dave has a few things for us this morning. Good morning, Dave.
Good morning.
We want to start with the approval of right of way evaluation for SAP fourteen six eighteen zero thirteen and CASA eighteen grading.
Yeah, we, uh, as we go through the right of way process, we always, uh, we make a purchase offer to a landowner, and then if they don't agree with it, uh, they can get their own appraisal. Uh, in this one case, we did have a landowner that did have a recent appraisal, so we ran that back by our appraiser, Tingam and Associates from Detroit Lakes. And what I've kind of found out was not all the land out there is equal. It's very close, but it's not all equal. And this parcel in particular has a little higher productivity index, I guess. And Tingam said that, uh, his appraisal was basically kind of a range between maybe sixty-five and seventy-five hundred dollars. He kind of came out with a seven thousand dollar per acre valuation, which is what we approved at the board here. Uh, the parcel, uh, in question here, uh, their appraisal, I think, was like around seventy-five fifty-seven or seventy-six hundred dollars. So, um, they would agree to seventy-five hundred dollars per acre for their parcel in question. It's not that much land. I think it's point eight eight acres, so it's about four hundred and forty additional dollars than what we already offered them. So I guess I, I thought based on the fact that, uh, their crop equivalency or productivity is a little higher than some of the other land up and down the project, I didn't really think it was out of line. So I, I said recommend that we would continue on with, based on the fact that they've got an appraisal, they've got actual, uh, you know, documentation, that it's worth a little bit more than our, our appraisal was.
Okay, any questions?
Should we act on it right away? I would move that we, we offer seventy-five hundred per acre for parcel number thirty.
Second.
Motion in the second. Any further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same. Motion carried. We'll move on to the next item, approval of a five-year road construction plan for two thousand fourteen to eighteen.
Yeah, our five-year plan is, like it typically does, has went through our highway committee a couple of different times. Uh, in addition to that, uh, we did something new this year. We actually advertised and held a public input meeting. Commissioner Gross was there, as well as a small handful of local residents, some of the township folks. And, uh, we actually had some good discussion. Um, I think over time, this will become a little bit more popular, and maybe more people will show up. Uh, but all in all, I think it was good. Um, there was some additional comments, no changes to the actual plan, I guess, that had already went through our, our highway committee. So I would recommend we approve our five-year plan.
John, you want to comment on behalf of the committee regarding-
On the what?
On behalf of the Highway Traffic Committee.
Sure. Well, we've gone over this, and, uh, and I, I think it's, uh, it's a good plan. We are going to get a lot of projects done. Uh, a lot of them, uh, some years, there's going to be, it's probably seemed like there's not much activity. But in other years, we'll have lots of activity, and it's going to, there's a lot of bridge replacements that are included, primarily in the third year. And, uh, we will have completed, uh, projects that we've been working on for a long time, namely for, in my district, old fifty-two will get graded this year and, and, uh, concrete, uh, put down in fifteen. So it's, uh, I, I think it really accomplishes a lot of the things that we've had on the, on the list for a long, long time. But the last three years will be primarily bridge replacements and-
Yeah, yeah, that's our bond repayment. You're right there. Uh, when we, when we agreed to go ahead and, and sell the bond for road construction, our last two or three years is mostly bond payment. Uh, the nice thing is, we do have an additional funding source there, the wheelage tax. Uh, and combining our wheelage tax with our county construction or levy dollars, uh, about every third year or so, we'll have a sizable amount of money that we're going to complete projects. So that was kind of what we vowed to do there. Uh, the wheelage tax is about three hundred and twenty thousand per year. The county funding is about three hundred and fifty thousand. So, uh, our plan is to kind of try to, uh, push that into the following year and kind of add that up until we get about a million or a million and a half, so we can do a sizable project on the county road systems.
One of the things that we had discussed quite a bit, and I'm not sure if it got in here now, how are we handling ninety-five? Is that going to be done all at one time, or is it going to be split?
We're looking at grading that year, grading that project all in one, in one shot, and that was in-
Sixteen.
Twenty sixteen. Uh, initially, we were looking at a two-year grading period, and we really didn't have a paving, I think, timeline set. But, uh, with the wheelage tax monies, we can get that all done in one year, which will be nice. Uh, and I believe our paving of that is possibly on the next year will be added to the plan next year, so twenty nineteen possibly.
Dave, is that a, is that a typo in there where it says, it says eighteen to percent twenty-five? Shouldn't it be twenty-six?
Correct. Yep, that is a typo.
I think that's a good move. We talked about how it would be less disruptive to have it all done in one year than to have it split in, in a couple of years.
I think the way we had it last year was we were going to grade it, part of it one year, skip a year, and then finish the grading in the third year. So it would have been multiple years of disruption. So this is much better with a little extra money. We're able to get it all done in one year.
Good, good.
John, this is also an indication of where this wheelage tax is really helping to fix roads.
Yeah, absolutely.
That was the purpose for it. Uh, not only is it going to do kind of ninety-five, then a couple of years later, we're going into the Glendon area, and we're going to fix up a mile of road there. It's going to also benefit from that wheelage tax, so. Those are things that probably wouldn't have been done had we not had those wheelage taxes.
And of course, if we hadn't done the bonding like we did, hardly any of this stuff would have been-
That's for sure.
Done. So it's, uh, it was a good move with very little interest for us to do this.
Okay, what we have before us is five-year plan, and that typically does need a motion to approve.
Move to approve.
Motion is second to approve. Any further discussion or comments on the five-year plan? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same. Motion carried. Thank you, Dave. That was good. We've got one more item here. We've got approval of construction and maintenance agreement for CASA eighteen project.
Yeah, this is real similar to what we did down in the, on Barnesville area on our highway fifty-two project. Uh, we've got a grading plan for this coming summer on eighteen. We also have about fifty thousand yards of material in excess. So we're trying to find something right alongside the projects. We don't have to haul this material all across the county. Uh, we're dealing with American Crystal Sugar Company. Uh, we've got a construction and maintenance agreement that's- agreement that's in the very final stages of approval. Jenny's been helping us with their attorney's office, and if we could maybe get approval contingent upon Jenny and their attorney's final tweaking of this, but for the most part, it's a, it's a land rent kind of an agreement, just like we did down on Long Highway 52. It's $250 per acre, based on two years' land rent, one year being construction, and then next year would be the final year of it. The total cost is estimated to be about $7,000 for the agreement, but the final disturbance area will be surveyed out and paid at the $250 per acre, so. Almost identical type of agreement from what we approved on Highway 52 project.
I'm sure you would save a lot more than $7,000 by not hauling it...
Absolutely, to that quantity of material, hauling it to a pit somewhere or something, for sure. And you know, the contractor doesn't have to put the material here, if he finds a spot somewhere else, but we just thought, for the bidding purposes at least, they won't have to put a large trucking cost into the dirt on this one.
Move to approve.
Second.
You have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? If none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same motion carried. Okay. Hey, Dave, just real briefly here, there's more people have been getting wind of the project that's gonna be going through town here, the...
11th Street?
Yeah, Mill and Overlay of 11th Street. And are you gonna be holding some sort of, you're gonna probably have, the bids haven't even been led on yet.
Correct, yeah, April 1st is when we open bids on that.
But once that's done, are we gonna have some sort of a meeting with different members of the public on how it's gonna be handled?
Yep, I guess, we'll get with the city on that, and I think there's a couple of different things we can do. One, we could have a little public meeting, we should maybe possibly have some sort of mailings, and possibly, I was thinking on the, even on the TV on that one channel that just runs ads and things, you know, maybe a guy can run something on there, just so make it more aware of exactly what we're up to, or schedule and some of those things. Of course, without a contractor, we won't have a schedule on that, but at least letting them know that, you know, from our anticipated construction date is from here, ending date from here, this is what we'll be doing, we'll be having a couple of different detours and things like that, so.
Yeah, there's, there's a few businesses that are gonna be interested in access to their businesses. One, and one of course being the Moorhead Country Club, has a lot of people coming from all over.
Sure. I did stop out there, and I talked to the manager out there and explained things, so I told her, once we have an actual contractor, we would, you know, let them know exactly when we'll be out in that area. They do have two accesses in there, is that right?
Well, they do, coming in from the north, it's a little bit more confusing.
Correct, yeah, you drive through them. Yep, I kinda told her we would make sure that, you know, obviously one is always open and limit their disturbance. From what I understand with the design, that, that area up there should be about a six-day area, so it shouldn't be too bad up in, up in that, you know, we should be able to get in and get out pretty quickly up there, but still, it could be a big deal. And I told her I would like to kind of find out what they've got going on as well, if there's something major planned, maybe we can kind of work around it a little bit.
Yeah, they, they do have a couple of major things, one in June and one in July.
Sure.
Major for them.
Yep, if we can work around that, that'd be good. I'll work with the City of Moorhead Engineering Group and find out what they normally do on their projects, and try to follow the same protocol on that.
Very good.
Will there be a problem for Crystal's access to their factory?
Yep, it'll be right along that same area. And you know what, it's, it's not complete regrade or anything, it's milling and overlay, so traffic should be able to utilize the roads as well, so as long as the contractor's well aware of that, they should be able to get them in and out of there. Hopefully, at that time, they're not too busy, you know, maybe some materials and things coming in, but they've also got that access off of 18, so we'll have to work with Crystal as, just as much as we do with some of the other ones, you're right.
Anything else for us today, Dave?
No, I think everything's sitting pretty good, waiting for our bid opening on the 1st, so that'll be, hopefully, a good day.
Thank you, Dave.
Thanks.
Move on to our nine o'clock item, County Auditor Treasurer Lori Johnson, she has a couple of things for us.
Morning.
Good morning.
I have a couple of things. The first thing I have is, basically, it's just renewing our Optimum Solutions payroll contract. We've gone through the contract and just tweaked it a little bit, no major updates or changes, and it's a five-year contract with an optional two-year renewal, and it basically locks in our, locks in our maintenance rates for those years, and really, there was no change to those, so was hoping you'd approve that, first of all.
So move.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same motion carried, okay.
And the second thing is also related to Optimum Solutions. We volunteered to be a beta tester probably about a year and a half ago, and that's finally coming, so it's actually gonna happen, and in that process, we ended up with an $11,000 bill, which I didn't realize was gonna happen. And so they have allowed us to split that between this year and, and next year, so I can budget for it next year. I probably can cover about half of that within my budget this year. However, I'm also working with MCCC to try and have MCCC pay for it, in case that we don't move forward with this project. Then I don't, being we're a beta tester, and we're kind of making sure everything, everything works properly, if we decide not to move forward with it, I don't feel that we should be responsible for those costs either, so. I am in the process of discussing that, but we have to have a user group meeting and go through all of that. But I would like to get moving on this, because I'd like to do it, you know, in the next couple of months. So the worst-case scenario would be, we'd be paying this $11,000, and 8, 8,500 of it is for training, so it's not for the actual product itself, it's for training our staff.
Okay, it's for training our staff, I mean, so that's the justification for us being billed for it, is it benefits our staff?
Right. There are some minimal charges for the file conversion and implementation assistance, but 85 of that 11 is for training our staff.
It benefits our staff, as long as we stay with the product.
Well, and that, and, you know, if nobody else is gonna be on that, you know, we, that's, and if it doesn't work properly, that's not something we want to do, so we don't feel we should be responsible for that then. But we are trying to move, as a county, away from the I Series, and this is a Windows-based product. And so, you know, more counties are looking to do that, and we're looking to bring more counties in on this product as well.
So, what action are you looking for today?
Well...
You wanna wait and see what this, what this negotiation is?
I can bring that back if you prefer, because initially, I was planning on moving forward as, you know, this 5,500 this year and 5,500 next year, and then I just started to think, I just thought, that's not right. If we don't move forward with that, I don't think it's right for us to pay $11,000 for something that we're testing for other people.
Yeah, well, maybe...
So I can bring this back later if you prefer.
Might be easier to negotiate if we haven't already agreed to pay it.
Right. I hadn't had that talk with, with MCCC yet, when I put this on the agenda, so, you know, maybe I should have just pulled it.
Just tell them the county board sent it back for you to reconsider.
Okay, that's fine, I kind of anticipated that.
How many counties are involved in this test? Are we the only county in Minnesota?
We're the only county that's testing this payroll part. There's another, we're testing both the payroll and the human resource parts of this, of this software. Wright County is testing the human resource part as well.
Did we apply for this, or how do we, how do we get involved in this?
It's mostly volunteers, and for all of our softwares, when we have upgrades, we have to have people testing things. And so, you know, we weren't testing the tax system, you know, we were a tester, a beta tester on the finance system, but somebody's always gotta be that tester, so. There's only, I think, seven of us, between five and seven, that even have this product right now, so.
All right, well, we'll just hold off on the second part, then?
Okay, that's fine.
All right, good.
That's it?
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
All right, item number five, originally on the agenda, has been postponed, and we have this agenda addition that deals with a jail issue, and has, has been reported recently in the media, not only is Clay County looking and probably at some point needing to change its correctional facility here, but Becker County is also having some trouble. Bill, I don't know if you wanna come up here for this conversation, or, you certainly can, but anyway, it was Friday at, Friday afternoon at noon, myself and Commissioner Wayland, and Brian Berg, and Julie, and Vicki was there, and then members of, from Becker County, there were two Becker County Commissioners and their administrator, and their jail person, the head of their jail, and their sheriff was there. And Bill, I think you had to be somewhere else, so. But they, they came to us just kind of questioning, knowing, you know, first off, trying to find out where we are in our process with ours, and, and we explained to them that, that we're, you know, we're kind of halfway through our financing component of it, how we would, how we were about to pay it. But they're, they have, you know, they talked about several options that, that they, they have, they need to do something different, there's no, no question about that. And they're not sure that moving to Hubbard County is the right thing, and, and so the, the question was raised, would we, would we be interested if we're gonna be building something new here to build it big enough for both counties? And so, it, that, that question is on each board's agenda for this morning, just to, just to find out if there's even interest amongst these boards to move forward with that. And, you know, I think from the standpoint of the meeting when, that, from Grant and I, what we've talked about is, we certainly felt from, from the Clay County's position, and of course, we didn't have you there, but we felt that it certainly shouldn't hurt to, to look at it. You know, and then, and then, that's the first step, both counties have to decide if they even would wanna be interested in doing it, and then from there, I know how these escalate, it gets into judges needed, need to get involved, and it gets quite, quite complicated from that point on, but that, that doesn't mean that, that we shouldn't seek out to find out if it's the right thing to do. You know, so, so for today, you know, based on our conversation, Brian and Grant, you can jump in any time on this, but we felt it would be good to go back to each board and find out from each board, are we willing to even pursue this, this idea? And, and then if so, then probably over the next few months, we would put together a group of people that would try to develop and answer a lot of the initial questions that would need to be done. For, you know, one, for example, from Clay County's standpoint is, any future jail that we wanted to build, we wanted to keep it on campus. And so, if we, if we were to enlarge in this thing to handle Becker County's, would, would our campus land be able to handle that? We, I mean, at first blush, we think it could, based on, on previous studies, but we would have to then invest a little bit of money into that to make that determination, and it would be money that, that we normally wouldn't have to be spending, you know, so, so we've told Becker County that, that they would have to be at the table and, and help with those funds for, for that part of that state. But, and again, that's just one, one component that we'd have to research, and there's many, many other things that still need to be done. So, but Brian, or Commissioner Wayland, or Sheriff, request if, any of you wanna comment on it, do you, if you, do you think it's, from your standpoint, are you okay with looking at a potential?
Well, definitely, the biggest two concerns I had is, I was, I was thinking they would wanna build a halfway between, which wouldn't do us a whole lot of good. Or two, if we built it all here, would there be enough room?
And that, and that's, that's the question, I, I think from our standpoint, we, we pretty much gave a clear message that, that we wanted to stay in Moorhead, just because of our court structure, and, you know, our tunnels and all that stuff that we have here, it just made more sense for us to, you know, and I, you know, and that, even like what Commissioner Wayland said, you know, we might have to redo our plans a little bit, and it might be that maybe the law enforcement wouldn't have, be able to be on campus anymore.
Right. I mean, that was always, we just kind of, back in our minds, that that might happen.
You know, so, so you could, you know, if, if law enforcement wasn't, wasn't, wasn't tied to the, to the jail facility, then, then we would certainly, I would think, have room on campus to do it. So, so those two, the, the one question in terms of, do we have enough space, I think more than likely, the answer would be, we could make it work. You know, but it's, and, and I, I don't think there's, we didn't think there was gonna be too much interest on the part of Clay County to move it out east. I don't know what your thoughts are on that.
Well, that, again, takes the transportation, you know, that you're gonna have to do daily, and, I mean, people do it, Cass County does it, I mean, they, I think they have two or three people working every day, that's all they do, is shuffle them back to jail or to court, or whatever it is.
Yeah, at least that was my perspective, too, that we wouldn't be interested. I thought, we were pretty clear with Becker County, people that were represented, that, you know, our plan was, was to have it here on campus because of those reasons. And they were gonna have a discussion today at their county board, whether that was something that they could live with, having their jail here. And then the other thing for me was, you know, I, at least I wouldn't be interested in any kind of a plan where we would lease space to them or anything like that, they would have to have an ownership in the jail, it's just too significant of a project to enter into for some, you know, three, five, eight-year contract, and then have them pull out and us have a, you know, because it would have to be a fairly sizable facility. You know, I thought one thing interesting, that they, you know, their, their population numbers are pretty similar to ours, and...
Yeah, did they tell you how many?
Well, it's, it's pretty comparable to one we have, which actually kind of surprised me, but, but, you know, given that, we would have to build a pretty sizable facility to accommodate that many prisoners, and so, we'd, we'd have to have some sort of an ownership partnership with them on the facility, at least from my perspective.
And I would think that part of that, they would keep somewhat of a jail, they would have the booking and...
They, they'd have to have their booking, and then they would, and they'd certainly keep their minimum security deal for once, you know, so they wouldn't, we, so you'd be getting more of the medium to high security would...
Right, that's kind of what I was thinking, which will be, you know...
They'd have to have a holding facility of some...
They would still have to have some sort of a small jail that would have booking rooms and holding cells.
Part of it is new, though, right? I mean, didn't they add on or build a newer park, I would think?
Yes, they did.
So, Brian, you, you wanna jump in here?
Well, just a couple of things, just, and, and you're, you guys are spot on, there were, there were two issues. One, you know, the message was pretty clear, it was gonna be in Moorhead, that, that Clay County, and, and the agreement was to take it to the both boards to see if they're all right with that. If they're not all right with that, it's no sense in even going down the road. The other was ownership, and, and even, even, we just touched on the issue of management, 'cause if you have a regional facility, then someone other than the sheriff can, can manage it, but, and I said, and I spoke for you on that, I said, well, Bill is very easy to work with, what he wants is how it works best, and, and so he wouldn't be stuck on one way or the other, but, but that was, that's further down the road. But the two points were, it would be built in Moorhead and ownership, so, but what they have for size is, they have 45 secure beds, and a facility, a 48-bed minimum security, they can go to 60 on that, though, if they add in the extra bunks over there.
And they're shipping out, what, 15 a day now?
They said 20.
20, yeah.
Yeah, so their count is pretty darn close to our count, which is...
It's really close.
Yeah, kind of surprising, but then, you know, they have some summer activities that generates some...
Well, and I do know during some of those, they, they do other, they contact other jails just because they have...
Oh, absolutely.
What we, you know, we're a good focus on this was, too, is, you know, you, I don't know that there'd be a real significant savings in terms of the bricks and mortar for, to do this, but boy, I'll tell you what, you could, between the two counties, there could be a long-time significant savings in the operations, that's where, where the potential would be, just, you know, really, really, really significant, especially when, under the new designs of jails.
Well, and especially, you know, we're at the place, or how many people we're gonna have to add that many more with the new styles of jail is not, you know, it's not gonna double it.
It, it probably even has a potential to save on the construction, because, you know, we would probably both be looking at, you know, comparable-sized facilities, and so to build one bigger facility may be more cost-effective than building, you know, two separate, you know, fairly large facilities, so. two separate, you know, fairly large facilities, so, at least it's, I think it's got some potential for, for both of us to save some money there, too, so.
But anyway, I, you know, I think for today, we wanted to, um, to run this by our county board, and I think, uh, you know, I think all, alls I was gonna be asking for today, um, you know, would just be more like a, a consensus of the board, are, are we willing to move, move forward, um, just in a, still in the discussion phase with them, um, and I, and I think likewise, that's probably what they're, they're gonna either, the choice is more theirs than it is ours, I think, from, you know, from our standby. I think we're, we should be open to do it, but, um, John, what do you?
Well, yeah, I think as long as you've made clear those two provisions, I see no risk for us to, to proceed. I think it's, uh, there's lots of possibility for benefit.
There may be some costs involved, though, if we get serious about this with them. I mean, it's gonna require some, you know, some people involved in, in-
But, but even those-
What it'll take, so it's-
Even those, Coach, Commissioner Wayland, I think, I think that still, um, some of those, as we go back to, um, re-look at a design that we have, that's back since two thousand and six or two thousand and seven, um, that, that's, that's old data already, so whether we move forward alone or together, I think Clay County would have to be spending some of this money anyway.
Right.
But, but the idea in mind now that, that there could be a cost share in some of this stuff, just to, to get it, I think would be, would be good. Brian, did you have anything else?
No, I, Mr. Chair, I think you covered it really well, but the other point that we wanted to make for our commissioners was the fact that, uh, we were looking at this as maybe two phases. We're still gonna continue with what our goal was for this year, next couple of years, was to put in place the financing for our jail, and if we wanna talk about, 'cause we have not started design or, or site, exact site location, we're still in the financing side of it, and we're gonna continue with that. This will be on the side, uh, whether we, we work together on it, so we don't wanna slow down our, our project. Uh, we don't know when that project is going to be built, but when we get the financing.
And I, I, I wanted to bring up one more thing that I, that I did bring up here, too, um, you know, because anytime you're dealing with construction of jail facilities and where a jail goes, there, there's also significant interest in, by the public, and, you know, the fact that we already have a jail right here, I think, I think the, the area around here has become, uh, comfortable with the fact that the jail's here. We haven't had any incidents with neighbors and so on and so forth, but we, but because we'd be getting to probably a much larger, um, uh, type of a facility here, I, I, I brought up the fact that it would, it would be really in our best interest to also, uh, seek comment from, uh, our Moorhead City Council on this, um, and have them, um, be in tune with it, because the last thing we wanna do is, is to have our city council, um, not like this approach. You know, so we can see where this goes. Uh, I've requested that joint meeting, uh, with the city council to go over some things, and maybe we can be far enough along. I think that meeting is gonna be sometime this summer, that maybe we could talk to them about that during that timeframe, but, and, and I think right now, it just, it depends on what Becker County decides. Becker County might decide we're gonna, they're not gonna, they don't have interest in it, that the topic goes away. So, but, so, uh, just, uh, um, if, if you wouldn't mind, um, you know, without an actual formal, um, motion, can I just get ideas from commissioners that are here, if we should move forward? Grant, are you?
Absolutely, yeah.
And John, are you okay with it? Frank, okay. All right, so, um, Brian, I think maybe we can just let them know there's just a consensus that, that we're willing to, uh, look at this. Um, there's, there's been obviously nothing formal here at this point. I think it's a little bit too early for that, but, um, maybe you, maybe you'll hear from them today, and, and if they've done the same thing, then we can arrange for, um, this next meeting to take place and to start, start a work plan to see how we could possibly make this work. All right? You good? Okay. Thank you, Sheriff.
You bet. Did you wanna?
Oh, it'd be a good time to mention that, too, Sheriff.
In case they have questions.
Oh, okay.
Mr. Sheriff, something else? Mr. Chair, uh-
Oh, you wanna, you wanna talk about this?
Yeah, yeah, if I could.
Yeah, yeah, go right ahead.
The, the-
So we'll go to your committee report this morning.
Well, it was just that the sheriff's here. I don't wanna certainly go ahead of the, of the commissioners.
That's okay.
But, um, the sheriff had asked me about this, and the, uh, Moorhead State Community Technical College, a Criminal Justice Association, wants to plan on sponsoring a fundraiser for, to raise dollars to assist with financing a K-9 unit for the sheriff's office, and, and, uh, if you folks don't have any objection to that, the sheriff's office is not involved in the fundraiser. Uh, you wanted to make that clear to the board, so-
Yeah, and I did talk to Lori, and she basically, if there was no funds that we're doing, um, the VFW, VFW is supporting it, the criminal justice is doing it, um, and the food is all being donated, so, other than, we'll probably be there, but, I mean-
Well, how can you, uh, how can you take advantage of, uh, you know, the, uh, other types of media out there to get this out?
Well, before I, I am gonna send it out, but I wanted to make sure you guys were aware, and if you had questions or if you have issues.
Can you, can you put this out? I know I, I see Clay County stuff comes out on, on Facebook, and-
Well, well, we put it on our Facebook account, but we don't have a whole lot of friends or whatever.
Well, but if you get it out there, others, others can, others can take that and share it, and it just goes and goes and goes. It goes into the cyber world everywhere.
If it's okay with you, I will be sending it out to the media today, so.
Oh, I think that's a good idea.
Bill, it says general living expenses for the dog. They don't, they don't require a certain number of square feet like we need in the jail now, do they, or anything like that?
I don't know why they added that, but, you know, they wanted to take it, and they had been working hard on it, so I, you know, more power to them than taking it on. And just so you know, we've started this whole thing, but, you know, not even for a year where we even, I mean, it's not in this year's budget anyways, so.
Well, unless you got it, unless you were able to get enough.
Well, I, I think we're up to sixteen or eighteen thousand donated already.
Right.
All right. Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, next, what do we have next? There are more, more committee reports. Grant, do you wanna?
Uh, I just had, I attended the MetroCog meeting, and, and Commissioner Gross already reported on that, and, uh, and then, of course, the jail committee, which we just had a lengthy discussion on, so that was it for me.
Yeah.
Uh, planning commission, it was Tuesday night, uh, pretty routine kind of hearings we had, uh, nothing that was controversial, and, uh, approved a horse boarding facility, for one thing, and, uh, the, uh, also some, some redistricting or replanning that has to be, uh, will be coming here eventually, was postponed from today, so. Um, then we had extension meeting on Wednesday, and, uh, in addition to, uh, you know, regular reports from our port egg person and our nutrition and for 4H, we did have a chance to hear, uh, Ben Anderson explain how many people are in our regional office now, and there are now fifteen people working out of that office, and there's room for a couple more, if, if the state extension sees fit to locate them here. It's gotten, uh, to the point where educators are, are asking if they can be placed here in their site, because they like the facility, so I think we've done really well in providing this facility for, for the state. Um, they expressed gratitude for our, uh, 4H position that we added, and anxious to get to, uh, providing after-school programming again, and, and I think that's, uh, gonna be very positive. So it was a very, very positive meeting. After that meeting, there was a, a meeting with our own staff concerning the multi-county , uh, human service, uh, discussion, and, um, we, we went over some, some parameters of what we thought would have to be, for us to be involved, what, uh, what we needed to, to do, and that was in preparation for the meeting that occurred then on Friday, uh, when Otter Tail and Becker County both were, were here to discuss, uh, discuss the possibility of working together, uh, on human service issues. It's really precipitated by the fact that Becker County has a lot of vacancies right now in a lot of departments, and they're, they, as they put it, they, that we have a lot of opportunity for working together, and, uh, so that's, uh, that was a very positive meeting, too, I think. And there were, just, you know, as I heard the meeting, uh, progress, I think there were four points that I think were, were significant. First one was that, uh, we should, as, as a group of counties, uh, make sure that we, every time there's a vacancy in our management, that we, uh, let the other counties know and consider, consider whether there's possibilities of working together. And that was really, I think, a good, a good suggestion. It came from Otter Tail County, but it, uh, it really is important that we not miss opportunities when they do come, come up. The second point was that, uh, Becker County needs help right now. They're without a social, uh, human service director, and, um, the Becker, Otter Tail County is providing help, uh, in finance, in finance, uh, to them, from their auditor's office, and, uh, they need help from us in management, in, uh, and so Rhonda is considering, uh, what ways in which she might be able to offer them assistance with their management. This is on a short-term emergency kind of need. They need it right now, and so we'd be looking at possibly, if we can make the, make it work, uh, looking at maybe until the end of the year. And then, uh, we also, the third point would be, we'd begin negotiations or, or discussion at least, on a long-term fix. In other words, long-term possibilities of working together with human service, maybe similar to what we're doing already with, uh, with public health. And that'll take one, time, I think we all agreed, it may take a couple of years before that's, before we're ready to, to decide for sure if that's what we wanna do. And the fourth point was that, uh, I think we were all committed to, to whatever we do, to be, to be looking at increasing efficiency, uh, and, uh, and service to our clients. Whatever we, choices we make, uh, those are the things we need to be looking at, including, you know, we wanna increase our efficiency, and we want to serve our public in a, in a better way. So those are the, as I saw, those were the four points that, uh, that came out of that discussion, and, um, Rhonda was going to make contact with them to go over and visit and look at what possible, what she thought would be needed for, from her, whether it's a three-quarters of a day, a day a week, two days a week, whatever is decided, we would look at, uh, look at that and figure out how to fairly compensate her for, for, or for the county for the time that we would, and then also to look at what replacements are, uh, we need to do to make up for the time she's not gonna be in Clay County, and see if there's things we need to do there. So those were, it was a very positive meeting, very upbeat, and it was just prior to the jail meeting, so maybe it, uh, helped set the tone for, for collaboration there as well, I hope. Uh, back to, uh, Wednesday, there was also a historical study board meeting, and, uh, that, uh, that was pretty much routine, uh, business. Uh, we have the new, uh, exhibit now in place for, uh, World War II, which has been very popular already. I would encourage anybody to, and everybody to go and visit, uh, that exhibit, and, uh, it's, uh, they've done a good job of, of, uh, telling the story and bringing in artifacts from people throughout the county, so I think everybody that goes there will find something relates to their, uh, to their lives and to their families and so on, so it's, uh, it's a very, uh, very good exhibit, I think. Uh, there was a Lakes and Prairies, uh, meeting at Eagle Cafe in Barnesville on Thursday night, and, uh, a lot of the discussion there was dealing with the, uh, the discussion that's going on with, uh, West Central, uh, Community Action and the possibility of, of sometime possibly merging those two organizations. It's in the early, early phases of discussion yet, but, uh, that's, uh, that's a possibility that they're looking at, and, and they're, they're looking at a three-year time schedule to, to make that decision. And, uh, together with, you know, in that would also be transition planning for, uh, how you would, you know, combine, combine organizations and possibly, uh, directors for the two, and whether it would be a merger, or whether it would be simply agreements to work together, or if they decide during that process to, that it, that it's not something that would benefit, uh, you know, those are all open possibilities, uh, yet. Uh, then, on, uh, yesterday, there was a board, uh, meeting of Lakeland in Fergus Falls, and, uh, things are, are going well for, for Lakeland. We spent a lot of time discussing this enterprise, uh, car, uh, situation, which, uh, Brian has been in touch with, uh, meeting with the person who presented to us there from the company, Wong Nystrum is his name, and, uh, it was, uh, it was a good presentation. The whole thing still seems too good to be true, uh, to me, but, uh, all our financial people there at, uh, at Lakeland are, think it's, uh, the way we should go. They think it's a very positive thing for, and in essence, it would provide a company car for, for all the employees that, that do travel for the organization, and, uh, save, uh, predict that over five years, it would save over a quarter million dollars for the organization, and they're currently paying fifty-six cents a mile for everybody's using their own car, and, uh, this would, uh, would be a big, big saving. So that's something that, it's, it works different for the counties than it does for the nonprofit, but that's something that Brian has been, uh, talking to this fellow about, uh, how it may also benefit us. Uh, that's it. Thank you.
All right, very good. Okay, I had, uh, two meetings last week, actually I had three meetings, but one was before early morning Tuesday, so I reported on that last week. Um, but John had talked about the, um, joint meeting with Becker County, uh, or, the meeting with Becker County regarding the, the human services and, and joined together. I was part of that meeting on Wed, the planning meeting on Wednesday, um, in which we had Lori Johnson there, and, and we did talk about several, several issues that moved on and into the meeting that, that John was at on Friday, which I could not attend. Uh, but I certainly agree that there appears to be ways that we can do some collaboration there that can probably just be a less, less financial burdensome on, on each county, so. I mean, I know it's, uh, we gotta listen closely to what our staff has to stay there, has to say there, in terms of if they can handle it or not. And of course, at noon on Friday was the other meeting that we had, which I, we went into detail here a little while ago, and that was on the joint meeting with Becker County on the jail, and so I have nothing more to add to that. So we'll move over to our county administrator update. Frank?
Well, thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, yes, several of the things, I guess we've covered in detail. Um, the public service privatization procedure, I, uh, I did receive an email from AMC last week, and, um, I forwarded some information in regards to that, and I made a copy in front of you. It was, uh, House File twenty-four fifty-nine, and it was dealing with public service privatization procedures and standards establishing for contracting with private entities. And I, frankly, I, I don't know the background on it. I don't know who is submitting this legislation or the purpose of it. I should say that Hornstein is the, the author, but the purpose of it, but it would really add a lot of, uh, for lack of a better word, red tape in contracting with services, and the counties, you know, we've contracted for so many services, just social services alone, I think in a success of a hundred and twenty-five different contracts we have out, and, and it would require so much background information and, and assuring of what they pay their employees, and I mean, it would be just so procedural in nature. It would be quite costly. It would probably increase, uh, ten to fifteen percent, I think was the estimate that, that it would cost in regards to, uh, contracting for these services. That has been put on hold, it appears like, for this session, so, um, I, I don't think you have to be concerned about that, but, uh, it came up kind of suddenly, and I wanted just to bring you up to, to speed on that. I think that's been taken care of. Uh, Commissioner Gross, um, commented already on the, the Holly Airport, uh, expansion, and that would be, if, I think they said they're paying their consultant, that consultant firm a hundred and fifteen thousand dollars, wasn't that it, uh, Mr. Gross? So they said they're serious and looking at this, and they wanted us to know that, that we weren't just out there wasting our time, that, that they want the comments on it. They'd like to, uh, one of the township officers that was there said that they utilized the county engineer for road- road issues, so they would really appreciate the county engineer's feedback on roads, 'cause they're looking at either rerouting or closing or whatever for roads. And then there's some issues with some, some of the residents around there as well. They'd like to extend that field, and I think Commissioner Gross said four thousand. Ideally, they'd wanna extend it to forty-four hundred, or, yeah, forty-four hundred feet, but they realize that four thousand might be the practical size of it, and, and it is to accommodate twin engines out there. Part of the social service meeting that we did have on Wednesday was in preparation of meeting with those other two counties. But then we also did talk a little bit about, and you had a presentation from Child Support, Child Protection on, on some of the debt that was outstanding here some time ago.
Yes.
And we had a good discussion on that. And just to, to reassure you that, that is, it's not outstanding debt in the sense that, and I'll just use this example, that I think it was over two million dollars that was shown that it was owed for detox services. Well, that, that is not an enterprise system. We cannot charge a person that, that the police department brings in at three hundred and twenty dollars a day and expect that we're gonna get payment for it. That runs like the jail. We finance it as a jail. We leave it on the books so that in the event of death or whatever there is, we could collect something from, from the property. But what was requested of, of your chair was that that be separated out as to what is owed the state and what is owed the, the county.
Yeah, and I'll kind of add to it. I, I, that was really a good meeting and a good update. Rhonda really brought, brought some good information. And the, you know, the, the whole deal of, of there's, this being this four million dollar bad debt on the books was, was, was quite a bit inaccurate as we looked into it. The, the two million of that, that, that was the detox, that, that's a normal operation and budgeted function of the county that we do every year. But because of the way the laws are, you still have to show it on, on the books and try to recapture as many of those costs that you can from the individuals who spend some time in our hotel. And so, so the, you know, and obviously, a significant majority of those just have no money to, to do that. So, but so over a percent, so we're, I know I'm talking with Lori, we're gonna come up with a plan. I know you, Frank, you had a lot of questions on this that day of the presentation. They were really good questions. And, and so I think we're gonna, we're gonna be writing these things off a lot sooner, not letting them build up to the way they are. And furthermore, the, when these future reports come out, we, we've, I certainly ask that they distinguish what are county responsibilities versus what are state responsibilities in these bad debts. Because the vast majority of the, of the responsibilities in those bad debts are indeed not the counties. They're, they're the states. But the way it was presented to us that day, it, it came off and appeared as though those were county bad debts, and they, they were not.
Yeah, I've met with Ron.
Yeah, yeah. So, but it, so it was really, it was kind of unfortunate day when that was presented, you know, that, that there was a lot of questions asked, and rightfully so. But, and they didn't really have time to do their homework and backing it up. And I, I felt really good after that meeting. That, it's not, it wasn't nearly as bad as it was.
No, I've had a good discussion with Rhonda since then too, and I feel a lot better about it too, so.
Okay, do you have any else, Brian?
Just a couple more things. Did have a diversion advisory, administrative advisory meeting and talking a lot about contracts and, and how they should run and who through, who they should run through and things along those lines. So a lot of discussion in regards to that. We had a central administrative staff meeting as well last week. That went well. Just on the, on the, just a little follow-up on the Becker, Otter Tail social service meeting. I think we'll watch that pretty closely, and I know we, we wanted to talk about it at the board here to see what the board's response was on that. But we'll watch that very closely as to how much time she can devote over there. Your social service director is very dedicated to Clay County and the program. You see that when she comes. She has every answer for every program that's in there. If you're gonna, if you're gonna help out another county, that's gonna take some of that time. And so we'll, we'll monitor how much control and different things on that. So we'll, we'll, we'll keep an eye on that as it pushes forward. So she's, she's gonna test that out too, so. And then we have a supervisor training going on right this week. We have a three-day supervisor training that we run every year for our new supervisors and managers and things. So, so we're pretty excited about that. I, that goes on, on an annual basis. And we want all of our supervisors and managers to be on the same page when it comes to the philosophical approach from, from supervision. And we think that really helps. So, thank you, Mr. Chair.
You're welcome. Thank you. John?
Brian, on the issue that AMC brought to us again, that you already spoke on it, but you did speak, talk about that you spoke from your perspective.
Right.
I'm wondering if it wouldn't be appropriate now to let our legislators know too that if we concur with, with what you did already, that we, you let them know that.
Okay.
And I, I think that would be helpful. I don't understand either what the rationale for this request is for this bill, but it obviously was not something good for the counties.
It, it didn't appear that way, and AMC was certainly not in support of it as well. So that would be very good, Commissioner. I appreciate that.
We could do that probably, Mr. Chair, by just consensus too, that, that we support what you did, and you should let them know that we are behind you.
Thank you.
I have one other thing here in regards, this is a communication from city manager in Moore regarding the times, potential times for joint meeting here. And I, hopefully you, you might wanna share with, with Vicki the time that, maybe find the times that don't work. And, and the only one that really won't work for me is the twenty-fourth of June that's there. So if you can put that down for me, the rest I think are all doable, those five block ones. So, but maybe if you guys can let Vicki know so that they can, we can get back to the city. Okay, anything else? Let it go to the order. Your turn.